Schedule and notification of this meeting have been provided to the Courier News, The Home News Tribune, and the Franklin Township Clerk. Copies have been posted in the library's vestibule and are also available at the reference desk. Though nobody can go there.
There.
I would like to open the public portion of the meeting. Is there anyone on board from the public who would like to speak?
Do we need to do the pledge first?
Yeah, we gotta do the pledge allegiance.
Well, we can do a virtual pledge. To do that, let's do it. We all know what the flag looks like. Pledge allegiance, to the flag.
The United States of America.
It stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mayor Kramer? Now to discuss approval of the minutes from the May 27 meeting. I believe you've gotten them in your packet. Is there any discussion of those minutes? Is there a motion to accept the minutes?
I move that we accept the minutes.
Second.
Thank you, Agnes, thank you. And I guess in Robert's rules, we should now discuss it, but we've already asked for that. Is there any further discussion?
Nick, who was the second?
Edward.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, those in favor of accepting the minutes from the May 27 meeting, signify by raising your hand. Okay, thank you, Ed, Agnes, myself, Kevin. Iris, are you in favor?
I wasn't at the meeting, so I can't vote.
As you wish, you want to abstain from voting on that?
Yes, I have to.
I see a majority, I see that this, the minutes have passed. Moving on to the Director's Reports. January, would you like to talk to us about your reports?
Sure. First, we'll look at the financial. And if anybody has any questions or concerns, just let me know.
Seems like you've added everything properly again.
Yep.
Tried to.
Looks like nobody has any questions for your financial report.
Everything looks fine.
And how about your program report?
Okay, it's been exciting times here. We found out on the afternoon of June 12th that we could use curbside pickup starting that Monday. It's a good thing we were ready. So we've been doing that, and at least on Monday and Tuesday, we had a thousand requests.
Wow.
So we've been busy. It's working out okay. And the young adult librarian's been very, everybody's been busy, everybody. The young adult librarian's been busy. It's, she's doing a lot of virtual stuff. She did an online teen spring art and craft concert. She's been publishing on social media. And speaking of social media, our Facebook page, we've gotten 14 new followers. Engagement is up. Traffic on our blog increased slightly. And our digital collections are performing very strongly. The three platforms saw a 56% increase. And the head of adult services updated the library's website, so it's easier for people to use. And the other thing I wanted to mention is that, oh, yes. We contacted Baker &amp; Taylor, that's our major vendor for book orders, and we told them to start sending us stuff again. We had a whole bunch of stuff that we told them not to send it. So they've been sending the stuff out, and now we've been doing new orders because we're doing the curbside pickup. People are requesting stuff, so we have to buy new stuff. And then the other thing I wanted to mention is this afternoon, again, this afternoon, the governor said that libraries could reopen on July 2nd.
Wow.
Not enough notice. It's, I think he was thinking we're like a restaurant that maybe we wanted to be open over the Fourth of July weekend, I don't know. I think the governor's done a really good job, but he hasn't done a good job with libraries. He keeps not giving us enough notice, and there's no guidelines yet. So what I would like to do is not reopen on July 2nd. I want to wait. I don't think it's safe yet for the staff and the public. There's some stuff we need to do, there's a lot of furniture that needs to be moved. We've got a lot of stuff in place already, but I just don't feel comfortable with it. And I wanted to tell you about my plans because there may be some, you may get some flack from people in town who say, why aren't they open yet? Why are they still doing curbside pickup?
January, excuse me, would it not behoove you, or if you want me to because I'm secretary, to send a letter to the governor explaining that, you know, we just don't work on today and tomorrow, we're ready? So would it, you know, he obviously doesn't realize that we need a little head, you know, heads rooms here.
I can tell you, many times with the governor's office, that is a constant refrain from various sectors, that you need to give more warning. I mean, you could send a letter, but
Not gonna help.
He will never see it.
Okay.
Someone will. And, I mean, they know. In defense of the governor, you know, there's no playbook for this.
No.
And then, and they, it's hard to predict things, and they say, all right, looks like things can open up, all right, let libraries open up. And we don't have to open up on that day. It's just you can, and maybe some libraries are small, or big, or whatever's different about them, that they can. We can't, and as far as I'm concerned, that's okay, we're going to be safe. And if you open up a week later, that's okay. I'm sorry to the public who might be watching this, but we're going to be safe. And we're going to keep our employees safe, and we're going to keep you safe. And I'm sure you will do it as expeditiously as possible.
Very well stated, Mayor, and I certainly agree with everything. And I would like to give January every authority to work at her own best pace with the public's and the employees' safety in mind, just as you said, Mayor.
Ms. January, if there's something the town can do, I mean, you can go through me, or you can just call Mr. Bornlocker. I'm sure they will assist you in any way while they can.
Okay, thanks, I appreciate that.
Is there any way they can assist you by putting a little notice outside for some?
Yeah, we'll put notices up, we'll let people know what's going on.
Good idea.
That's a good idea.
... circumstances, you cannot reopen as said.
January, I want to thank you for your fine planning and careful execution of a plan to go to reopen. And I know you've been working there quite a bit with some modifications inside that you need. Some of them for reopening, and some of them just things that you took the opportunity with a little bit of spare time for the building to be improved. I want to thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you for the thank you.
Any other questions for our Director with respect to her reports? Seeing none, let's move on to the President's Report. I think you've all gotten this, but I'll read it anyway. "June 24th, 2020. Last month, we were stalled in our efforts to negotiate the hoops necessary to acquire a two-acre property from the Board of Education for the purpose of building a new Franklin Park branch. The county clerk's office was closed, and required records were not available for our engineers to complete the subdivision application documents. Consensus at our May meeting indicated that we should proceed when conditions permit. There is, however, uncertainty regarding the level of our future funding. High unemployment might lead to reduced third-quarter tax payments. Reduced property assessments might lead to a lower appropriation from the township. January has reviewed our operating budget and determined that an 8% cut in funding can be accommodated without hindering, can be accommodated without hindering our ability to operate three locations. Now that the records room of the county clerk's office is accessible, the time is right to proceed, leading to the purchase of land and construction of our own owned 5,000-square-foot branch. I would like a motion to restart the process with the Reynolds Group." That's the report, and when we get to old business or new business, we will discuss this as a group. I'd like to move on to correspondence. "On June 16th, I received an email from Jonathan Totes, who is the Franklin Township Board of Assistant Superintendent for Business for the Franklin Township School System. He asked, what, he wanted to know, where do we stand with regard to the Franklin Township land sale? I answered him the same day, June 16th, and I told him that the Reynolds Group had surveyed the land, the lot, and the lots around it. And the next step is for the Reynolds Group to prepare drawings for a subdivision. However, the clerk's office at that time was closed. I said the clerk's office is closed, and I also said that the trustees will meet on June 24th, as we are doing now. And I will let him know on June 25th when we're going to restart the process with the Reynolds Group." Okay, that was one correspondence. And today, I received a letter, which I'll read, I think you all got it. This is from Tom Lennon, one of our trustees. "Mr., dear Nick, it is with regret that I am sending you this notice of my resignation from the Franklin Township Library Board. It has been a pleasure associating with all of the hard-working and dedicated members of the Board. I have learned a great deal about the inner workings of the library and the great value it provides to the citizens of Franklin. I am very appreciative to Mayor Kramer for allowing me the opportunity to meet with and work with such responsible members of our community. Unfortunately, with the changes in our world over the past few months, I am unable to dedicate the time the Board deserves to be a team member. My sincere apologies for any inconvenience my recent absence has caused. Warmest regards, Tom Lennon." So, again, when we get to business part of the, old business or new business, we will act on that resignation. Is there any old business? I suppose we could consider the subdivision plans, old business, since we talked about them at the last meeting. And in my President's Report, I did ask for a motion to proceed. Is there such a motion?
I still make, I still move.
To proceed with the negotiations, right?
With the preparation, this would be, this would be simply to ask the Reynolds Group to start up again on their work that's required for the subdivision that we will make from a four-acre lot to a two-acre lot. And it's block 37.02, Lot 12.
Okay, so yeah, so you need us, you need somebody to make a motion for that, for the Kramer Group. So I'll make a motion to, for the Kramer Group to resume their
Reynolds Group, okay.
The Reynolds.
Reynolds.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
I second.
Okay, now let's discuss. I think everyone should get at least two minutes to say their piece on this, and since I know Mayor Kramer wants to speak about this, why don't you start, Mayor?
He's on mute.
How did that happen?
There you go. So I think two minutes are going to quite be enough. First of all, what's the cost of this?
That, this part of the work, we don't, I have asked for the cost, I don't have the cost of this part of the work.
Okay, and then what would the cost be to actually do the subdivision?
Are you, okay. My understanding is that the township is going to, I talked to Mark Healy, and he said the town, Mark Healy, and I believe it was Vince Dominic, that the township will do the subdivision if we prepare all the papers, and that's what the Reynolds Group will do for us.
Okay, we don't need to involve a lawyer?
No.
Okay, all right. So the issue is, do we need to do this in order to get the grant?
The answer to that is no. The grant has already been submitted. But I'm not, I know you sent me an email earlier asking a similar question, and I didn't answer because I really don't know the answer. I think we have to do it to get the deed?
Yeah, all I, all I was really interested in is, do we need to own the land? Do we need to, what do we need to do to get the grant? I don't know, I'll kind of, what I'm going for, I'm peeling the onion slowly. We're in uncertain times, and to build a library extension, now I think it's something I would be hesitant to do right now. At this point, we are renting. The nice thing about renting is, you can stop renting, you know, even the lease, when you need to stop renting. We need to abandon a, one of the library annexes because our funds have dropped, and we can do that relatively easily when we rent. I mean, I suppose you can abandon the building you've already paid for, which you still have to do some upkeep with it, et cetera. The problem is, we don't know, you know, we did okay collecting taxes this year, I mean, this last quarter, but the quarter that we've always been afraid of has been this quarter. So we don't know how much we're going to collect. So if the town already collects 80%, we may not have the money to pay the library, the Board of Ed, the county, those are the big ones, Fire Commission, their money. Another thing is, we don't know what's going to happen a year from now. Like to say, the amount, the money the township appropriates, township doesn't appropriate a dime. That's all by state formula. And that state formula is dependent on the town's assessment. So if the town's assessment doubles, and it's over a three-year time, but let's simplify the equation, if the town's assessment doubles, we get twice the money. It's just like, houses just go crazy, and not a single other person moves in, we get twice the money. If the, however, if assessments go through the floor, they could, I have no idea what they could do. They could go down 10%, they could go down 20%. There are those who are predicting it's going to go up, because people are learning they don't need to live in New York City, they can tell me, and why live in a place that was the hardest hit in the country? Let's move to Franklin, and I can own, you know, an acre, and nobody can come near me, and I'll be safe, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So our assessments may go up, our assessments may go down. People may pay their taxes, people may not pay their taxes. I don't want anyone to think about this, and I don't know that this is a time for us to start owning land. I mean, I don't care if we buy the land for the B.O.E., that's all fine. But I don't know that I want to start building.
The motion that's on the floor is to proceed with plans for a subdivision. Now, I think you're talking about a much broader subject, which probably has to be discussed in the near future.
I still have the floor, Mr. Chairman. The, the problem is, though, that we're moving, I have no problem with this, but I do not want to move forward into construction with this much uncertainty. You know, this is, I would prefer we knew the expense, I'm assuming this is something like $2,000, but maybe kidding myself, I guess I don't want to do this. So that's fine, but I really do not want to move into construction until we have some idea of what it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, I'd like to hear from others. Agnes, what are your feelings?
Well, if we have the opportunity to get the land, I prefer we get the land there. Although, as the mayor said, looking at situations now, we don't know what's going to happen in the near future. But if we get our personal property, and then we can start building as soon as possible, because it says strike while the iron is hot, so I believe we should get our property in place.
Okay, thank you.
Nick?
Yes, Iris?
How much money have we spent so far to come to this place where we are now?
I'll refer that to January, I think she has some numbers on that.
I think it's $22,000.
Okay, so then, and the price of the land will be?
$240,000.
How much?
$240,000.
$240,000. So I'm afraid that if we don't buy the land now, the money that we spent, the $22,000, will have to be spent again if we don't do this. And it's a crapshoot, because the value of the land could go up, the value of the land could go down, so
What's?
I think we should proceed with it.
What's the, uh, like, I guess, the probability or the possibility that we buy the land and then are not able to proceed with the construction? Because, I mean, if it's a case of losing $22,000 or $240,000, I mean, I mean, or is that even, is that something that could happen? I mean, speaking, listening to Mayor Kramer, it seems like, you know, that is something that is in the realm of possibilities? Or am I not understanding it right?
Thank you, Kevin. I think, January, can you talk to that, in that, you know, we are, we do have the money in reserve to build the building, so can you explain that?
Yes, you have the money, sir. My feeling about it is, we don't know if we're going to get the grant, but if we get the grant, and then we don't go ahead, actually, I'm jumping ahead to the building court, but if we get the grant, and then we don't use it, or don't build the building, we're kind of like throwing away $1.3 million.
Right.
Which would be a shame. And I do recognize that it is uncertain, but we do have the money. I think there's enough that even if we took a big hit with our appropriation, we could weather it. The other thing I would just add is, kind of playing devil's advocate, is, I don't think it's all that easy to walk away from renting something. I think we'd be bound by the lease, and we might wind up paying rent money for a branch that we weren't using. So, and the other thing to consider is that, you may remember that the branch's HVAC is in very bad shape, and that's going to need to be replaced, and we're on the hook for that if that happens. So these are all things that should be considered.
And you know what, January, if that, if that machine is old, we're having this here where I live, not for me, because I'm in a home, but where the carriage houses are, the replacement for those machines are, you can't get the parts anymore, so they have to dig through the building, which is more costly, it's costing so much money extra because these machines, the equipment is so much older, that people are up in arms, and there's nothing you can do about it because it's old equipment.
Okay, thank you.
Think about that also.
Edward, would you like to say something?
Yes, yes, I do. First, I have a question to January, and then I do have a statement. January, we applied for the grant, but we have not received a grant, correct?
Correct.
Okay, do you know the status of, you know the status of the grant? And the reason why I say that? I applied for some grant to the state of New Jersey for Franklin High School, and everything was frozen due to COVID-19.
Now, I haven't heard that. The only thing I've heard about the library grant is that they're supposed to make a decision in mid-September, but I haven't heard, it was frozen.
Okay, be mindful of that, because the governor was going to make a decision in March, and we got notification that all funding for any extra projects has been frozen due to the fact of the uncertainty. With that, I agree that we should go and purchase the land if it has no impact on moving forward with operation of the library, but I think we should really pause on building. And let me tell you why. We don't know the future. We can have a second wave, and it can put a strap not on state and township as well, because the state is strapped, and they hoping that they get care from the government. We don't know if that guaranteed, and we don't know where that money would be allocated for. And I understand that you made reservations or preparations to cut so we can continue operations, but the last thing I would make is for us to put ourselves in a position where we have to cut services and take away from providing a service to our community, especially at this time where our community is going to need the libraries if we continue remote learning, social distancing, in this timeframe. We don't know what the future may hold, and we start building, we're building with blinds on, because we can say, we're going to start construction in October. Because we can say, okay, we're going to, we're going to start construction in October. We're going to have a second wave and the state shut down for six months. And you got to think about the supply chain. You're putting yourself in a position where builders might not even come out to build. You can't get supplies. There's so many uncertainties based on what took place in the last four months that I'll be very hesitant moving forward in building something in the future. I will wait till we get to some type of normacy and then consider it, just like with the school district. You don't know. So we wouldn't take on a major project if we don't know what the future will.
Yeah. That's a good point. I just, I just.
Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this issue?
Let's say we, we get the land, and then when it's time for us to get the grants, we don't have the $1.3 million, what will we do?
So my, my feeling is, if you get the grant, you should then go ahead and build, otherwise it's a problem.
I wouldn't hear what the mayor said.
Yeah.
I, I think if we do get the grant, we should build, otherwise it's throwing away $1.3 million. So that's not an issue. I don't see why we would be losing the $22,000 that Iris was afraid we would be losing. I don't think the B O E is going to be subject to anybody else. I don't think they're going to be building on it. So I don't think you have to worry about that. The, I just sent a text to Mr. Bornlocker asking his guess as to what the Reynolds Group fee would be. And he says he has no idea, but if he were to guess, he would say $7,500. So I, I actually, I have no problem actually with taking this step. I, I think it's a minimal risk. This step, I'm just kind of foreshadowing that if we don't get the grant, I don't, I don't, I, I wouldn't build. I mean, I personally wouldn't be buying a house now if I were renting, if I don't know if I'm going to keep my job or not. And that's kind of where we are. We don't know if there's going to be an income for the library. So I, I really have no problem with moving forward this step, $7,500. You know, make for politicians ever saying it's not a lot of money, but in the scheme of things, it's a manageable amount of money. No, I'm not sure of the rush, but I have no, no problem. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's, is there any other discussion? And if not, I'd like to call, and call for a vote on the motion, which is to proceed with the work necessary for a subdivision of the property that we're going to buy from the Board of Education. I'd like to call for a vote. Agnes?
Yes.
Edward?
Yes.
Iris?
Yes.
Kevin or Mayor Kramer, whichever wants to?
Yes.
Nick, that's me. I would vote yes. NBC, are you on the line anywhere?
No.
Okay.
You can look at participants. He's not on.
He's not there.
Okay. I, I would determine that the motion has passed. But realize, it's only to proceed with work leading up to the subdivision. Thank you.
Okay.
Is there any other old business?
Can we get an update about the center on Lewis Street?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Update on the youth center.
Then I'll lose it. Any update?
Mayor, can you tell us anything?
A little bit. The, it looks like the foundation is in and the steel should be arriving this week or next week. There were delays prior to COVID due to something about the soil. That was fixed. And then COVID, I, I kind of got a mixed message. COVID didn't delay things, but it got in the way. So it's delayed a little bit, but the steel should be arriving.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Is there any new business? I, I would entertain the motion to accept the resignation of Tom Lennon, one of our trustees. Is there such a motion?
I still move.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
He's a nice guy.
Sorry to see him go.
Yes, sorry to see him go is right.
Okay, those in favor of accepting Tom Lennon's resignation signify by raising their hand.
With regret.
With regrets, okay.
No thanks from.
It looks to me as though it's passed. And Iris, I would ask that you write a letter to Tom Lennon thanking him for his service on the board. Is there any other new business? Seeing none, I, I see no reason to go into executive session. And I'd like to open this, the second part of the public portion of this meeting. Is there anyone now, a member of the public who would like to speak? Seeing none. I would ask that we close the public portion of the meeting and confirm that the next meeting date is August 26th.
Oh, Lord.
And hopefully we'll be able to meet in the library in person at that time. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
I second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all for attending. And Robert, thank you very much for setting this up.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
Everyone.
Stay healthy. Stay cool.
Okay, bye-bye.
Bye.